Good evening. It is 6 o'clock PM. Welcome to the Legislative Meeting of York City Council for September 21st, 2021. My first item is a special presentation from Jeff Schuh in regards to the 2022 George Street Resurfacing Project.
Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I will be brief. I have asked Chaz if I could attend, and I will apologize in advance. I have to leave early to go to a second meeting, so he was kind enough to get me on it early. Tonight, what I want to do is just briefly talk with you about the George Street Resurfacing Project. That project is intended to be constructed in the spring, or started in the spring of 2022. It will be bid this December, and it's a rather unusual project for the city, although we've replicated it previously. The work will include base repair, resurfacing. The limits will be from Rathston Road to North Street, which is almost the entirety of the city, and I'll talk a little bit about how that will carry on and be the entirety of the city. It will include signal upgrades. It will include thermoplastic pavement markings for all the pedestrian crossings and line markings, and it will include additional ADA compliant pedestrian crossings for George Street to try to make it a little more walkable. What we anticipate to be traffic control, which I anticipate would be one of your primary concerns, well, we will continue to have two-way traffic on George Street throughout the entire construction period. We'll do that through flagging and what PennDOT allows for in terms of traffic patterns. As I noted, if all goes well, we look at a start of construction in April of 2022 with the completion prior to the fall of 2022, hopefully in October thereabouts. I anticipate that the work would start with concrete work for some of the ADA ramp work and some of the storm sewer, et cetera, prep work, and we'll conclude with the milling, which is the grinding of the surface to get a smooth surface, and then a repaving, and then all that follows that repaving, which includes pavement markings, et cetera. I say it's an unusual project because it's being funded through what's called the YAMPA, which is the York Area Metropolitan Planning Organization. They are charged with allocating federal dollars that come through PennDOT. So this is an unusual project, and it's much like what we did many years ago with Market Street. Market Street is a city road, as is George, a city road. So you are responsible for the resurfacing of George Street and the maintenance of it. In this case, what's happening is transportation, federal transportation dollars will be paying for all of the construction associated with this project. We have estimated the project, as it's being bid right now, at $2.6 million. We have federal dollars to pay for the work that total 3.1 million. So we are confident that the bids, should they come in, as they previously have in past years, that we'll have plenty of money to do this work when the bids come in. Because it is federal dollars, it's bid through PennDOT's, what's called ECMS program, meaning that PennDOT actually is bidding this project, even though we designed it locally and provided them the bid documents, which is a little unusual. We just did the exact same thing, and I think you might have passed a resolution for the rail trail section in the city, and you heard the same resolution request that you're being asked to act on tonight. So I guess the only other thing I'd like to add to this, because I mentioned at the very beginning, there is a second part to this. It's being designed, and bid specifications are being put together by TRG engineers, and that will actually take from where we end to mill and pave into North York, including restoration and renovations to the Cadorus Street Bridge on George Street. That will be a separate project, also funded with federal dollars, much like this one. So I come to you tonight for two reasons. One, you're going to be asked to pass a resolution that essentially allows this money to come through the city and then be paid out to the contractor because of the way this is structured, and secondly, because we need to check a box for PennDOT to say that we have explained this project to you as a council and that you understand this project in a public setting. So I've been working with the mayor, I've been working with your Public Works Director. I believe we have a very good project, and I'm excited to try to see this through construction. So if you have any questions, I'll try to answer them.
Thank you. Any questions from Council?
Is George Street the only street that you'll be working on?
Under this program, yes, ma'am.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Have a good evening.
Have a good evening.
You, too. All right, we will move on to public comments. We didn't receive any forms. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to participate in public comments? Hearing none, we will move on to our legislative meeting. It's 6:05 PM, and I would like to call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Rivera.
Here.
Washington.
Here.
Ritter Dixon.
Here.
Walker.
Here. We will now stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll now take action on our previous meeting minutes for August 17th, 2021, and August 24th, 2021. Council, are there any changes or corrections that you would like to make? All right, hearing none, all those in favor of approving, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is so ordered. Our next legislative meeting is Tuesday, October 19th, 2021, at 6 o'clock PM in Council Chambers. Agenda items are due by noon on October 13th. We will now move on to our legislative agenda, and we will begin with subdivision land development and HARB. Up first, we have a resolution approving the preliminary final subdivision plan submitted by Peel and Company.
So introduce.
Resolution number 97, introduced by Judy Ritter Dixon. A resolution, whereas Peel and Company has submitted a preliminary final subdivision plan for 475 West Philadelphia Street and 145 North Hartley Street, and whereas the city officers have reviewed and recommended approval of the plan, and whereas the plan is in accordance with the city's ordinances, and whereas the Planning Commission recommended approval at its meeting with various waivers, now therefore be it resolved, said resolution is hereby approved.
Move to approve.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Councilwoman Ritter Dixon, would you like to say anything?
Um, no, I don't have anything to say.
Do we have representatives from Peel and Company on the back? Okay, you can come on up if you could just talk about, actually, the next two resolutions.
Hi, I'm Eric Peel.
Hello.
I'm sorry, what was your first name?
Eric.
Eric Peel?
Yes.
Okay.
And can you just tell us a little bit about these two resolutions, 475 West Philadelphia Street and 145 North Hartley Street?
Yeah, we submitted the plan as a preliminary slash final land development plan, so that was the one agenda on your item. A little bit about the project, it's at the corner of Hartley Street and Philadelphia Street. It's the old foundry. Essentially, it's an adaptive reuse project, so we're going to retain the building that fronts West Philadelphia Street, raise the building at 145 North Hartley Street. The 145 North Hartley Street will be consolidated into a reverse subdivision plan to be known as 475 West Philadelphia Street. We'll have approximately 132 parking spaces on site. We'll be putting up two type 5A wood construction additions onto the existing building. The one addition will be fronting Gas Avenue facing north. The other addition will be east, facing the Bucart Horn Building. In the total project, it will be 98 market rate apartments. Any other questions?
Thank you. Any questions from Council? No. All right, it has been moved and seconded. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Rivera.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Ritter Dixon.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes. That is so ordered. I believe you're talking about the same thing for our next resolution, so I'll leave that to be introduced.
So introduce.
Resolution number 98, introduced by Judy Ritter Dixon. Whereas Peel and Company has submitted a preliminary and final land development plan for multifamily residential units at 475 West Philadelphia Street and 145 North Hartley Street, and whereas the city officers have reviewed and recommended approval of the plan, now therefore be it resolved, said plan is hereby approved.
Move to approve.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from Council?
None.
Any questions or comments from the public? Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Rivera.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Ritter Dixon.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes, and that is so ordered. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Have a good evening. Up next, we have Resolution 99.
So introduce.
Resolution number 99, introduced by Judy Ritter Dixon. Whereas Snyder Secari, or Secari, I'm not sure, on behalf of Dermody Properties has submitted a land development plan to redevelop the property at 1090 East Boundary Avenue into a warehouse and distribution center, and whereas although the project site includes a parcel in the city of York at 745 Dollar Street, and whereas the project and proposed was almost exclusively in Spring Garden Township, and whereas the planner and city engineer recommend the city defer review and approval of the plan to Spring Garden Township, now therefore be it resolved that the city council approves the Planning Commission's recommendation to refer said project to Spring Garden Township.
Move to approve.
Second.
Item has been moved and seconded. Councilwoman Ritter Dixon, did you have anything?
I do have a question. What did they, what does it say that it's going to turn it into a warehouse, or?
Would you like to come? You can come, yes. Oh, I'm sorry.
Josh Hoffman with Snyder Secari and Associates, here to represent Dermody Properties, who's the applicant of this plan in Spring Garden Township. Andy Miller is here tonight as well, representing Dermody. Just to give you a quick overview here, the parcel land that you're referring to in the city is this square, essentially, right here. Right here is the city line. Just to give you a little perspective, there's just a slight amount of impervious area that ends up crossing, crossing the boundary line. All of this work is in Spring Garden Township. All of our stormwater, traffic, and everything like that comes to Boundary Avenue and ends up coming out in this location here. We're actually, we're going to be realigning Boundary Avenue and correcting this intersection out here as part of the project. It's about, this is the industrial facility right here. It's going to replace the Glengarry Brick Plant. This will probably happen over the next couple of years, but we're doing the planning for it now, and it's about 342,000 square feet. If I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from Council?
No.
No.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Rivera.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Ritter Dixon.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes, and that is so ordered. Moving on to final passage of bills and resolutions.
Madam President, Vice President, I would entertain, like to entertain a motion to consider as one item for vote, Items 4 through 22 on Council's agenda.
Is there a motion?
I motion.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's so ordered.
Okay, so Bill Number 33, which was introduced by Judy Ritter Dixon, an ordinance amending the 2021 budget by appropriating $50,000 in expenditures for Habitat for Humanity Chestnut Street project. Bill Number 34, amending the 2021 budget for the Treasurer's Office to reallocate funds of $7,675 from overtime and other professional services to cover other essential 2021 expenditures. Bill Number 35, an ordinance amending the budget for year 2021 by appropriating revenue and expenditures for fire rescue in the amount of $70,000 for architectural engineering consultant fees of the wrecked Laurel Fire Station renovations. Bill Number 36, amending the 2021 budget in the amount of $5,752 for the tuberculosis program. Bill Number 37, an ordinance amending the 2021 budget in the amount of $238,750 for the Safe and Healthy Communities Program grant renewal. Bill Number 38, amending the 2021 budget in the amount of $20,819.23 for the Bureau of Health Safe and Healthy Communities Program. Bill Number 39, an ordinance amending Bill Number 17, Ordinance 17, approved on July 20th, 2021, for reapproval due to reduction in the amount of revenue and expenditures from $212,905 to $180,620 for the York City 2021 Budget Bureau of Health Prescription Drug Monitoring Program. Bill Number 40, an ordinance amending the 2021 budget in the amount of $181,923 for the Public Health Emergency Preparedness Cooperative Agreement. Bill Number 41, amending the 2021 budget appropriating revenue and expenditures in the amount of $275,000 for the Healthy Moms and Healthy Babies Home Visiting Program Grant Renewal. Bill Number 42, an ordinance amending the budget, 2021 budget, in the amount of $273,000 for the HIV Prevention Program Grant Renewal. Bill Number 43, amending the 2021 budget in the amount of $20,989.27 for the child-led, the childhood-led poisoning prevention program grant renewal. Bill Number 44, amending the 2021 budget in the amount of $443,642 for the Immunization and Vaccines Grant. Bill Number 45, amending the 2021 budget in the amount of $1,165,456.31 for the Epidemiology Laboratory Capacity Enhanced Protection Grant. Bill Number 46, amending the 2021 budget in the amount of $319,729 for the Healthy Moms and Healthy Babies Program.
Madam Clerk, just a point of order. So your agenda has been corrected, and perhaps others have agendas that have not been corrected. Others may have 491,000. You read the correct number.
Right.
I just wanted to make sure that everybody knew. I didn't know what agendas you had. I still had an agenda that said 491,000.
Yeah.
So the correct number is 319,729.
Okay.
Thank you.
Bill Number 47, amendment to the 2021 budget to show revenue and for the acceptance of ARPA funds. Bill Number 48, amending the 2021 budget in the amount of $50,000 for establishment of a housing and eviction counseling program. Bill Number 49, amending the 2021 budget in the amount of $261,493 for the elevation response levels of firefighters through training. Bill Number 50, making appropriation for money not otherwise appropriated in the amount of $35,000 to fund auditing services for ARPA funding. Bill Number 51, making appropriation for money not otherwise appropriated in the amount of $40,000 to fund an employee vaccination promotion program. And that is it for final passage.
Move to approve.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions from Council? Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Rivera.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Ritter Dixon.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes, and so ordered. Up next, we have new business, introductions of bills. We have first introduction, amending the 2021 budget for educational opportunities to protect children.
So introduce.
That has been introduced. It will sit until next month's legislative meeting.
I just have to read that by short title.
Sorry.
Real quick, okay? And that's Bill Number 52, introduced by Judy Ritter Dixon, a bill amending the 2021 budget by appropriating revenue and expenditures for the Bureau of Health in the amount of $25,000 for education opportunities to protect children from exposure to lead hazards.
Thank you, and again, that will sit until next month's legislative meeting. Up next, we have introduction of Bill 53.
So introduce.
Bill 53, introduced by Judy Ritter Dixon, a bill amending the 2021 budget to reflect the rollover of funds, revenue, and expenditures for the Health Bureau HIV Prevention Program Grant in the amount of $6,067.06.
And next, we have introduction of Bill 54.
So introduce.
Bill Number 54, introduced by Judy Ritter Dixon, a bill amending Article 730 Neighborhood Improvement Ordinance of the Conifer Ordnances to include enforcement powers to be granted to the Bureau of Permits Inspectors, increase days to file an appeal from 10 to 14 days, and establish penalties.
Now, we have a resolution supporting and welcoming Afghanistan refugees.
So introduce.
And that's Resolution Number 100, and I'll defer to the mayor, who has requested to read that into the record.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Did you want to wait until it passed for me to read it, or do you want me to go ahead and read the whole thing right now?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. An informal resolution declaring the city of York supportive and welcoming of refugees from Afghanistan. Whereas on September 11th, 2001, the United States suffered four coordinated attacks conducted by 19 members of the terrorist group Al Qaeda, and whereas this attack precipitated a United States and coalition military invasion and occupation of Afghanistan that would last nearly 20 years, and whereas the United States and coalition missions in Afghanistan were overseen by four presidential administrations and multiple shifts in the majority party of both chambers of Congress before the final withdrawal of U.S. and coalition military forces, making the Afghanistan conflict and its aftermath the responsibility of our total political system, and whereas the Taliban has achieved a swift and violent restoration of its control over the institutions and people of Afghanistan upon U.S. and coalition withdrawal, whereas thousands of Afghan citizens supported Americans and allied forces standing side by side with our service members, diplomats, and aid workers while serving as interpreters, engineers, logistical service providers, and more, and whereas Afghan citizens who supported American and allied forces, along with their families, have been targeted for execution by the Taliban for their support of the United States and coalition missions, whereas more than 300 Afghan interpreters are already known to have been murdered by the Taliban for supporting American and allied forces, and whereas the United States began withdrawing its military forces from Afghanistan on May 1st, 2021, and completed its military withdrawal on August 30th, 2021, whereas the United States has conducted battlefield vetting of those Afghans who supported the U.S. and coalition missions, and has an established Special Immigrant Visa Program to support the evacuation and relocation of our Afghan partners, and whereas 16,000 visas under the Special Immigrant Visa Program have been issued since the program began, and more than 18,000 applications to the Special Immigrant Visa Program remain pending, whereas failing to protect America's Afghan partners would leave thousands of individuals and their families in peril and would undermine America's position as a global leader and trustworthy moral partner, and whereas the city of York recognizes the historic impact of the war in Afghanistan on our region's armed forces, and recognizes that the many Yorkers who served in Afghanistan were aided by the very Afghan people who were awarded the protection of immigration to the United States in exchange for their service alongside our service members. Now therefore be it resolved that Section 1, the city of York hopes to be a home to refugees from the war in Afghanistan, and will work with local partners, communities, and governments to make this possible. Section 2, that the city of York stands ready to support the evacuation, case management, screening, and resettlement of Afghan refugees traveling with a Special Immigrant Visa, and to coordinate that response with county, state, and federal government departments and agencies in accordance with previously established and proven best practices for emergency resettlement. Thank you.
And Mayor, I'll make those final corrections that we talked about, and Jason also sent it to me. I'll make those on the final resolution.
Thank you.
There's just a few typos in there, you guys.
Move to approve.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from Council?
Could the mayor possibly break this down a little bit more for the community that's watching to explain exactly what this means?
Yes. Throughout the country, mayors have been asked to assist the federal government in helping these allies. So I was on a call with the White House, with staff from the White House and the U.S. Conference of Mayors, and they asked us to participate and asked us to help support. We've had no direct contact regarding the number, if any, refugees would be directed our way. However, the federal government is in the process of working with local municipalities to try and assist these individuals.
And so they're asking us to be open to receiving those people?
Exactly.
Okay. I just wanted it to be reiterated so that the people that are watching understand what you're saying.
Yes.
Exactly what it's saying instead of all the language in the resolution.
I appreciate that. It means that we are thankful for their service to our country, and we respect that, and if York is to be their home, we plan to be there to help them make it their new home.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from Council? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Rivera.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Ritter Dixon.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes, and that's so ordered. Now, we have a resolution authorizing the Public Works Director to sign documents for the George Street Resurfacing Project, and that is so introduced.
And that's Resolution Number 102, introduced by Sandy Walker. Whereas the city of York desires to enter into a reimbursement agreement with the Commonwealth Department of Transportation for acceptance of a transportation improvement program, here and after referred to as TIP funds, and whereas the city has been awarded $3,137,000 in TIP funds under the PennDOT's TIP program to cover the cost of the George Street resurfacing, now therefore be it resolved that Council does hereby approve the acceptance of said funds, and that the Director of Public Works is authorized to sign documents on behalf of the city of York.
Move to approve.
Okay.
Has been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from Council? We already had our presentation earlier. Hearing none, Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Rivera.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Ritter Dixon.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes, and that is so ordered. And our last resolution of the evening, Resolution 103.
So introduce.
And that is Resolution Number 103, introduced by Queen of Washington, a resolution extending the declaration of disaster emergency for the city of York through October 31st, 2021.
Move for vote.
Has been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from Council?
I'm sorry.
That should be Resolution 102.
102, correct?
102, that's correct, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Yep.
102. Any questions or comments from Council?
None.
Hearing none, Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Rivera.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Ritter Dixon.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes, that is so ordered. No requests for future meetings. Any Council comment? Hearing none, administration comment?
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Yes, I want to make sure that folks out there know that this is a big time for grant-making to the public here in the city of York. We've already established, September 1st, we opened the application period for our small business grants, up to $10,000 for businesses that have 10 or fewer employees. You can find links to those applications and information on all of these things by going to yorkcity.org. Also, we opened up our seniors' home assistance program, grants up to $7,500 for individuals 62 or over that are city residents, and also have no outstanding bills to the city of York, I believe is also one of the other stipulations. So all of that information is available on yorkcity.org, and I'm very, very excited to announce that tomorrow, the American Rescue Plan And I'm very, very excited to announce that tomorrow, the American Rescue Plan money, we start taking applications for the money that the federal government has provided us. We do have a committee that Councilwoman Lou Rivera and Councilwoman and Queen of Washington are members of, with Council Vice President Sandy Walker being an alternate on that committee. We have many other representatives from around the community that are part of that. So this is really going to be a community-driven grant application review. And so tomorrow, we will get those applications. Applications will be online. Melanie, first thing in the morning? Sometime tomorrow? Or by 6?
So technically, they won't know what they're doing until after the 6 o'clock meeting. But they're online. They'll be able to, because they have to log in.
Okay. So the application process will begin tomorrow?
Yes.
When should they check it?
They have to learn how to log in.
Okay, so they learn how to log in at 6?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. There are...
Is there a Q and A at 6 o'clock?
Well, yeah, you should have received, you should, you're a member of the committee. You should have the schedule and the...
I have a lot of emails, so that's why I'm asking.
Okay. So this application process, while we are going to try to be as giving as possible, it's still federal money. So there are still federal reporting requirements that the city must comply with, and therefore any grant recipients must comply with those as well. So the application process is going to be through an online system. The first meeting to learn about this is tomorrow at 6 o'clock. And registration? No.
There is no registration. Anyone?
Okay, yeah, there is no, okay.
Did you?
It's okay.
Are you going back and forth, or is she going to come up?
I can continue if I may. 6 o'clock, we will have a meeting. I just wasn't sure because of the size of the room if there was a restriction. That was the one thing I was asking. But from 6 to 8, we will be instructing individuals on the application process. If you, and there will be, it will be online also. You can receive instructions by watching it on York, City of York Facebook page. If you cannot meet tomorrow night, then also next Wednesday, the 29th, it'll be a repeat of the same meeting, the same instructions. But you must go through this process if you are going to be applying, or have someone associated with you or your organization so that you know what you're doing. We will try and assist in every way, but we are expecting quite a few applications. So for the best customer service, you should try to be available tomorrow at 6, or Wednesday, September 29, at 6 o'clock. The application period will be open until October 22. We will then, the committee will review the applications, make recommendations to the mayor's office and council. The mayor will include it, or the mayor's staff will include it in the budget that we present to city council, and then city council can approve or deny at that time. We felt that that was the best process that we could find, instead of having to come back and vote on every single, on every single item. That would be quite cumbersome for the city council. We are very pleased to present tonight, and I know I've presented it a few other times, but going to take this opportunity to present the analysis of the survey results. We had a survey that 2.5% of the population, of the adult population of the City of York responded to that. And you may think 2.5% doesn't sound like a lot, but when it comes to voluntary surveys, that is, that is a very high number. That is what is graded as a 95% confidence survey. So we have 95% confidence that the information that we got is correct, and there is a 4% variant on any given question. So if they, if 63% of the people said that this is what they wanted, it may be 59, or it may be 67. But that is a pretty tight range that we know that this survey is accurate. And I think most individuals are going to be pleased with the top 10 priorities that the people of York City have chosen. Number one, and by the way, this is for people that said this item is either important or very important to them. 73.6% of people chose evidence-based community violence intervention programs to prevent violence and mitigate the increase of violence during the pandemic. That's number one answer. Tied for number one is fund behavioral health counselors to assist police officers with responding to calls. So coresponders, when we know that there might be a mental health issue or some other issue with the people, we are coming out to help. Next, at number three, 71.6% assistance to the victims of violence. Number four, 71.5% promoting healthy environments for children such as new or expanded high-quality childcare, parent education, and other programs. I've already begun a discussion with the school district about how we could work together on those items. Number five, at 69.8%, services to address homelessness such as supportive housing and to approve access to stable, affordable housing among unhoused individuals. 69.5%. Number six, provide earn while you learn paid work and education programs such as the former Job Training Partnership Act, or JTPA, programs that some of you may recall existed here in the past. Number seven, 69.4%, partnership with appropriate organizations to assist with family issues including economic support, health needs, or child development. So general family support. Number eight, at 69.3%, fund mentoring and after-school programs. Number nine, 69.1%, build a York City Mental Health Assistance and Service Program. And number 10, at 67.3%, building stronger communities through investments in housing and neighborhoods. So these parameters or these choices, this was the top 10 out of 30. These have all been provided to the committee members. So while committee members may have individual opinions on different applications, this is the mandate from the people of York City. This is the lens that we will be looking through when we determine in general where our funding is going to be applied. And I think that's all I have for this evening. Thank you for your time. And just a reminder, get your grant applications in, and if you don't, if it's a business grant, sheree mcfadden, smcfadden@yorkcity.org is your contact. Contact yorkcity.org for the Elder Housing Assistance Program, and then everything else will be coming up online and available. Melanie, what was the email? The new address?
It is americanrecoveryfunds@yorkcity.org.
American, if you need help with the ARPA money, americanrecoveryfunds, plural, at yorkcity.org. Thank you, Madam Vice President.
Thank you. And that adjourns our meeting for this evening. Have a good evening, everyone.